I'll call the April fourteenth of two thousand and fifteen school board meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Kristy.
Rick Kimball.
Here.
Nancy McMorris-Ottox.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Jeff Fable will be absent this evening. Jim Green.
Here.
Paul Kylo.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
Thank you, Kristy. Agenda modifications we have done tonight, so we'll move right into the agenda and start off with spotlight on success.
Good evening and happy April. Nice crowd tonight. All right, our first spotlight is going to be the Volunteer of the Month presented by Karina Lee. Thank you so very much. At this point, I would like to invite Sonia Moody-Horroto. Horroto, thank you. Up to be here with our board chair, Rick Kimball. And I also believe we have Mr. Rasca in the audience from the Swiegel staff. Thank you. Sonia Moody-Horroto is our selected Volunteer of the Month. She was nominated by Swiegel Elementary School staff. Sonia has been a Swiegel volunteer on and off for the past twenty years. Sonia is a hard-working mother of three who works ten-hour days. Oh, great, we've got Karina, our principal, is here. Great. She works ten-hour days, Monday through Thursday, in order to be at Swiegel every Friday to assist with any task needed. She's even willing to take on the most mundane of tasks without voicing a peep. Sonia also volunteers at all Swiegel evening and weekend events and has served as the parent teacher club president. As a tribe member and education specialist for the Sleds Tribe, Sonia is an amazing advocate for the Swiegles Native American students. Sonia's last child went through Swiegel Elementary, is about to move on to middle school. She has been highly valued and will be missed by the Swiegel community, the staff, the parents, and especially the students. Thank you, Sonia, for your support of Swiegel Elementary and to the students of all Salem Kaiser schools. Congratulations. All right, our Community Partner of the Month will be presented by Jay Remy.
Thank you Superintendent Perry, Chair Kimball, and members of the board. Our Community Partner of the Month is Salem Health. So if we could get Leilani Slama and Richard Mundie to join the board chair and the superintendent at the front. Leilani Slama is the Community Relations Director for Salem Health, and Richard Mundie is a desktop technician and inventory specialist for Salem Health's Information Services. Salem Health has been selected as our Community Partner of the Month, and they have partnered with the district for many years. In the past year, Salem Health has replaced many of their computer monitors and several computers in their facility and have donated the ones that they replaced to our district, which were a big improvement over what we had in some of our computer labs. So since mid-October, our technology department has made a weekly pickup of approximately two hundred monitors each Friday from Salem Health. So the total is pretty astronomical when you get down here to the bottom of the citation. And basically, these monitors were the flat-screen type, that we were placing them in our elementary testing labs, and those help improve the room temperature because the larger ones that our technology people tell me sometimes they're called boat anchors. They're big, fat monitors that go a long way from the front to the back. They take up a lot of room and they give off a lot of heat. And heat is not good for kids, and it's actually not good for computers, I think, if your computer facility gets too hot. So the flat screens help keep it a lot cooler and give us more space. They also improve readability on the screens. TIS will replace monitors at Sumter in addition to any in their testing lab, so these are also other computers in the school. The project has been completed with Salem Health having donated a total of two thousand four hundred and thirty Dell monitors along with sixty-four Dell computers to the district. Pretty amazing, isn't it? So thank you for your support of Salem Kaiser Schools and our students, and congratulations to Salem Health as our Community Partner for the month of April. Thank you.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Melissa Cole.
Good evening Superintendent Perry, Chairperson Kimball, and members of the board. It is a privilege to recognize tonight Taylor Gibson, and with Taylor is First Sergeant Wagner and Principal Steve Nelson from Parish Middle School. Taylor Gibson, an eighth grader at Parish Middle School, is a cadet on the Precision Marksmanship Team from North Salem High School. In March, the team participated in the All Service JROTC National Championship, which was held at Camp Perry, Ohio. The competition was a culmination of events that started in October with over eight thousand JROTC Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marine Corps cadets participating. The other cadets on the Precision Marksmanship Team are North Salem High School students: Cheyenne Bennett, Andrew Gross, Laura Gross, and Zach Rogers. The team from North Salem High School placed fourth overall in the competition. But what is truly outstanding, on day one of the competition, Taylor, an eighth grader, set two national records, one for JROTC and one for the fourteen-year-old category, in the kneeling position. She got a perfect score, two hundred out of two hundred points, and she hit eighteen of twenty perfect bullseyes. Very difficult to do. Taylor was also the day-one individual top shooter, which is practically unheard of, as it is usually won by high school juniors and seniors with several years of competition experience. Taylor has been part of JROTC since November and has only been shooting for one year. For her to do as well as she did as an eighth grader in competition and to set two national champion records at the same time is an amazing accomplishment. I think we will hear a lot more about Taylor Gibson. Congratulations, Taylor.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Kathleen Hanneman, Director of Secondary Schools.
Good evening, and we have a big group of art students. I'd like to ask Spregg Principal Curtis Cho, Englewood Principal Gary Etchamendi, Shirley Principal Clinton Gertnerich to come up here. Englewood Elementary Student McCory Sheridan, Shirley Elementary Student Tears of Tarbox, Spregg High School Students Elizabeth Russen, Ara Hurst, Acacia Bailey, and Sarah Sliger, and teacher, Spregg High School Teacher Connie Toland. So we have a large group. The Eighteenth Annual World Beat Festival will be held June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth at the Riverfront Park. In preparation of the festival, an art contest was held for students of all ages, asking them to depict in art form the two thousand fifteen World Beat Festival focus, "The Drum Rhythm of the World." So in March, four Salem Kaiser students were notified their artwork was selected as winners in the art contest. So McCory Sheridan, a fifth grader at Englewood Elementary, took first place in the K-eight individual category, and Tears of Tarbox, a third grader at Shirley Elementary, received an honorable mention. Spregg seniors Elizabeth Russen and Acacia Bailey received honorable mentions in the high school individual contest. Spregg High School Art Teacher Connie Toland was notified that for the fourth year in the row, Spregg won first place in the high school classroom category. So that's really, that's real exciting. An award ceremony will be held on Friday, May fifteenth, at the Salem Carousel to honor the winning students of the World Beat Art Contest. Their artwork will be displayed during the festival weekend. We also have, in the arts category, the Sixteenth Annual Earth Day Event that will be held April eighteenth at Oregon Gardens. A poster contest open to students in grades K through twelve was held, asking students to use the theme for Earth Day, "Green Footprints." The focus was on methods for lessening our impact on the environment and our natural resources, thereby metaphorically speaking, walking with green footprints, which is really neat. So we had Spregg Junior Sarah Sliger won the eighth through twelfth grade category in the poster contest, receiving a fifty-dollar gift card from Fred Meyer. Ara Hurst's art received honorable mention, and their artwork will be on display at the Oregon Garden in the grand hall during Earth Day. Congratulations to these winning artists and the Spregg High School Art Department.
And our last group of spotlights will also be presented by Kathleen Hanneman.
Thank you. I'd like to ask West Salem High School Principal Ken Phillips and Science Teacher Jonathan Williams to come up, along with Rachel Bass and Ally Rasmussen, their two colleagues. Spencer Echelman and Luke Gertzman could not be here tonight, so we'll have them representing West Salem High School. West Salem High School students Spencer Echelman, Luke Gertzman, Rachel Bass, and Ally Rasmussen competed along with twenty other high school teams at the Central Western Oregon Science Expo on March seventh in Eugene. The expo, a joint venture between the University of Oregon and Oregon State, is a middle and high school competition for students interested in science and engineering. The West Salem students were awarded for their exceptional science projects and were one of ten teams to advance to state competition. Spencer Echelman and Luke Gertzman received the U.S. Air Force Outstanding Project Award. Their project used metal alloys that liquefy at room temperature. These metals are sensitive to and will move in response to an electric field, and the group hoped to use this property to grow simple electric circuits. The possible future application of this technology would be a computer that would create its own circuit connections just as the human brain grows its own neurons. So that's pretty, pretty impressive. Rachel and Ally, Rachel Bass and Ally Rasmussen, received the Naval Excellence in Science Award and the Outstanding Project in Material Science Award. So Rachel and Ally also used a metal alloy to create pressure-sensitive device. When pressure is added to the alloy, if I make a mistake, let me know. When pressure is added to the alloy, the electrical resistance chart changes and can be measured. This group has demonstrated that the sensitivity is on a scale that can be used to monitor blood pressure while implanted within a vascular system. Although it hasn't been implanted, it has proved sensitive enough to provide data in hydraulic systems built to mimic human arteries. That's really impressive. Further development of this item could lead to an implantable blood pressure cuff that could monitor the patient's blood pressure. Congratulations to these students for their award-winning projects.
Okay, the next agenda item we have is Audience Communications on agendas topics, and we have nobody signed up to communicate on agenda topics. Does anybody want to talk to the board on agenda topics that didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on into our action item for tonight. Tonight we have one action item. It is a resolution in honor of National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution, board. Title is Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims May fourth through the eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. So that's the resolution. Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
So moved by Paul Kylo, second? Second by Nancy McMorris-Ottox. Any comments or discussion?
What can you add to that?
I would just say, "Here, here."
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No negatives, we have a unanimous decision. Okay, that's our only action item tonight. Next is Adoption of Consent Calendar Items. We have items under Business related to Grant Budgets. Then under Personnel, we have some personnel actions and some administrative personnel actions. Is there any item here that a board member needs to pull tonight for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a complete consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Jim Green, second?
Second.
Chuck Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? All right, passage unanimously, Kristy. Okay, we're on to readings. First is Revision of Board Policies. Okay, as you may recall, during our summer retreat, we, the school board, got into our complete policies under policy governance, and we made changes to several parts of the policies over the last couple months ago. And the results policy, we worked on over several work sessions over this first four months of the year, and the results of that work are presented under this action, this first reading. The school board has gone through the results policy through these work sessions, and we've made some changes based on discussion in the work session. Staff and leadership has gotten together and gone over the discussion, and the changes are outlined in R1 and R2. R1 is the governing statement, and R2 is the academic achievement. The underscored items are the items that are being removed from the policy, and the insertions are underlined, excuse me, the insertions are underlined, and the things we're removing have a cross through in them. So with that, this is the recommended revisions in the results policy based on our discussions from leadership to the board. We're not taking action tonight. This is a first reading, so we're open for discussion and questions on this. Chris.
There's just, on the second page of the actual results policy where there's two underlined paragraphs under the note, and it has to do with the change from smarter of our superintendent and from Oaks to S back all at the same time, and how we're going to handle that. The second paragraph says, "With that in mind, board leadership shall have the discretion to determine what data sets will be used in the superintendent's annual evaluation." I don't remember the discussion that led to that being turned over to board leadership, and I just wonder if I will have an opinion as to what data sets we might use, and wondered if, why board leadership will have sole discretion over that.
This is what I recall happening during the discussions, that we were going to have that discretion, but I think it will be open to the whole board if you're not, if you're not happy with the decisions of leadership as to what topics we would cover.
In other words, we will have a discussion.
Yeah, we will have a discussion.
Okay. All right. Just didn't remember that as part of the discussion.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I have another one.
Go ahead, Chris.
I just want the board to know that I'm going to be voting no on the results policy this year. Since I've been on the board, I've been trying to bring to our collective attention the fact that our board policy and the tenets of policy governance make it really clear that the board is supposed to be having two-way dialogue with key stakeholders in the community around the ideas that lead to our results policy. And in the six years on the board, my six years on the board, I haven't, we haven't had any of those. And as a result, I keep voting for a results policy that may be incomplete because we haven't done our due diligence with the community, and our communication with the community determined what it is that they would like to see as outcomes for our students. And because of that, I'm going to, I just can't in good conscience continue to vote for something, even though I don't necessarily see anything in the results policy that I disagree with. I simply, it might be incomplete because we haven't done our work. So I'm going to be voting no this time.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, this will come back to us at our next meeting for potential action that night. Okay? The second reading has to do with a potential sale of Rosedale Elementary School, and I will turn the discussion over to Chief Operations Officer Mike Wolf.
Thank you. Good evening Superintendent Perry and Chair Kimball, members of the board. Tonight is the first reading for the potential sale of Rosedale Elementary School. Just a little background and discussion. As you all know, we've experienced some significant budget cuts in the past several years to the tune of just a little over a hundred and forty-four million dollars over about a five-year period. These cuts included reduction in force, reductions in programs for students, textbooks, computer software supplies and materials, contracted services, other operational costs, and all employees agreed to concessions during that period. These cuts also included the closing of five elementary schools. Hazel Green, Rosedale in two thousand and eleven, Bethel Fruitland and Lake La Biche in two thousand and ten. In May of, there's a typo, in May of two thousand and twelve, the district entered into a long-term lease agreement with Abiqua for the Rosedale property. Now it's a ten-year initial term lease with two five-year options to renew. Officials from Abiqua have indicated an interest in purchasing the property, and the district has received an official notice to that effect. Staff recommends selling the Rosedale property and using the proceeds to meet other pressing program and overcrowding needs within the district. Staff believes that this is a better long-term approach than continuing to manage the property through the existing lease with Rosedale. If the property sells, staff would recommend the proceeds be combined with the proceeds from the sale of Rosedale and used to mitigate the following space issues within the district. One, our community transition program, which is a special education program, actually several programs that provide services for students aged eighteen to twenty-one years old, is currently in lease space. Actually, we have a few of the programs, the CTPs, in lease space, and it's essentially the Salvation Army space that we've been leasing for several years. And ideally, it would benefit the students and the district to have a permanent location for this program. Also, McKay High School is crowded, and the district needs to consider relocating the programs currently occupying the Roberts Annex, which is on the McKay grounds. In order to sell a district-owned property, the school must first declare that in the board's judgment, the property is not required for school purposes. At the same time, the board would approve the listing of the sale of the site. And our recommendation would be that the school board take the first formal step toward authorizing the potential sale of Rosedale Elementary School by taking action to declare in the judgment of the board, the property is not required for school purposes. This is presented only as a first reading tonight, and will return for action at your board meeting on May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions, discussion? Anybody have any questions tonight? Chris, or you? Chris?
I'll just, for those of you out there, we've had a work session on this already this evening, so what we talked to them about there and what we talked to them about here, I have to sort of square that away in my mind. But I want to ask publicly that we have some sort of a fiscal analysis of the difference between selling that building and keeping that building for twenty years as a lease. I don't really care how you go about that. It can be guesses and bygollies for all I care, but I would like to have some idea of, are we fiscally better off to rent that building or to sell it and not have to rent other buildings that we wouldn't have to rent because we now have the money to buy something? So that's just a request that I have before, if we could do that by next month so that we have some idea of that before we vote on this, it would be helpful to me.
Okay. Anybody else? Don't see any more questions tonight.
Are there other questions that aren't in the board plate that you would have questions on before you'll be ready to make a decision for next month beyond Chris's?
I will look in. Nancy?
I guess I'd be interested in if there are any models through the city that suggest where growth might be in the next ten years.
Sure.
You know, if they look at that. I'm, I should know this, and I don't. I'd also like to know what we did with the proceeds from Middle Grove.
Yeah, I can answer that. They're still in the account, waiting for distribution or expenditures. Yep, we've, we've kept them in the special projects account outside of the general fund as we had described to you that we would do that, and we have not expended those funds.
I just bring that up because we had a lot of conversations when we were closing schools and the talk about Middle Grove, particularly with Ron Jones and his commitment to finding a place for the community transition program and giving them a permanent home.
And that's actually part of the board plate, that where we were talking about combining the potential proceeds from the sale of Rosedale with those that we still have waiting from Middle Grove.
Chris?
And the other thing that really comes out of the work session that I, that I would ask that would really help me is...
Let me just remind you, that was an executive.
Right, I, it just, the thinking started there. That's all I will say. The, what I really am concerned about, about, in essence, surpassing a school, is whether or not we'll need it again in the future. But the question that really comes to my mind about Rosedale is, Rosedale is an older facility, as I understand it was built in the sixties, and I was built in the six, no I wasn't. I don't know how old that makes me. But I really am concerned about the following question. If we were to at some point in the future need that classroom space, and I think that's where Nancy's going by asking about growth patterns in the city, how do the facilities at Rosedale stack up against our current list of standards that we came up with when we designed our four new elementaries? If we were to move back into that building, what would those students be missing because they're in an older facility that might be available to them if we were to sell it now and then ultimately use that money down the line someplace so that we can build a new building?
That's a great question. I can only tell you that when we design our elementary schools now, they're designed for six hundred-plus students, and Rosedale had less than two hundred when we repurposed it, as did all of the other small schools that we repurposed.
And ultimately, it would probably be true that a school...
Microphone, Chris, please.
Sorry. Oh, microphone. Ultimately, it'd also be true that it was inefficient to run in those, when we closed it because of inefficiency and therefore saved money, and it probably would be inefficient to reopen.
That was the justification for closing the schools and repurposing during the Great Recession. That's, you may recall those conversations.
Unfortunately.
Yes, we do recall these conversations.
Any other questions or discussion tonight? Okay, this will be coming back to us in May. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for readings tonight. We move on to reports. We have two tonight, and the first one's a monitoring report on Executive Limitation Number Ten Facilities. Superintendent Perry?
This is, sorry, jumped in too quick.
That's all right.
This is the tenth of your twelve monitoring reports. This one happens to be on facilities, and there's a number... This one happens to be on facilities, and there's a number of statements that I won't read to you, but I do want you to look at number two. Fail to establish a procedure for development of long-range facilities plan to address changes to student enrollment. While there is no evidence of noncompliance, I just want you to take note of the fact that we're in the middle of that facilities assessment right now. Step one was with Full Day Kindergarten. As we're moving into Full Day Kindergarten next year, that puts a different level of crowding in our elementary schools especially. Take that all into context with the sale of Rosedale, but Rosedale's pretty far out south. We do continue to steadily grow. We grew by about 200 students plus this year, and they have been especially in the East Salem areas. McKay High School had a bubble that was a bit unexpected. So, know that the next step in that facilities plan is to really look at that enrollment, and we'll be moving that work into next year. Other than that, there were no evidences of noncompliance, and I just wanted to note, make the note about where we were with our facilities study. Any questions?
Jim?
So, it's not a question, I guess it's a concern.
Yes.
As I tour the district, and I know we're having crowding issues, and I know with Full Day K, I think we're going to purchase or lease six portables, and I know there's an opportunity when we have to use those. I've been in those. Those are horrible learning environments to be in, some of those portable. So hopefully, as we look forward with, with our facilities plan and our master facility plan, while I know there's purpose in using those portables and they do provide space, you know, I'd like to be able to have as few of those on the district property as we, as we at least can, which may require us to go back out to our voters and see if they're willing to help us with more facility issues. But I have some friends who teach in the district and get assigned to those, and in the very beginning of the school year, they're hot as all blazes, and in the wintertime, they're not real warm. You go in there, they're just not those warm, inviting classrooms that you envision, elementary kids, middle school kids, and even our high school kids to be in. So I just want to make sure it's something that we're aware of.
And just for a note on that, our, the modular units that we're purchasing, those are the double units...
The double classroom units, right.
With bathrooms on a permanent foundation, so those are better than some of the older...
The kindergartens would have access to the restrooms.
Yeah, exactly. And we won't always, and we won't have kindergarten in all those classrooms, it doesn't automatically assume kid.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chris?
As I read through this board plate, I kept writing little notes to myself, and when I went back and looked at them, they were all really the same question. And so I'll ask that question. As we build this computerized maintenance system, okay, let me back up and say, as I think back to when I first got involved with the school board, and I think probably Rick and Chuck were the only two that were on it during the run-up to the bond that we passed and were able to build our new buildings and fix all our old ones with, there was a real concern in the community that it was sort of surprised by or chagrined by the lack of deferred maintenance being done. And they asked us to, and we have been putting aside a certain amount of money every year, I think it's a couple million dollars, for, to take care of our maintenance so that our buildings don't get as rundown as they were this time. And part of the problem with that, of course, is there isn't enough money to do all the maintenance, so some of it must be deferred. And part of the problem is that there, the community continues to grow, and we get more and more students, and therefore we need more and more classrooms. I'm just wondering if this system is going to help us stay enough ahead of that whole thing to be able to be more transparent with the community about how we're progressing in the regard of maintenance and how we're progressing in the regard with space so that we can at least warn people a little ahead of time that we're probably going to be coming in a few years with the idea of a new building or two, and we're going to have to catch up on some of this maintenance we haven't been able to do. I'm just hoping the system helps us get there. Please reassure me.
So, I will answer in them, Mike, if I miss something, you tag in there. So, from starting as an outsider looking in, one of the things I've really noticed is that we have a really good tracking system, and I think that's the result of the last bond. So, a very skilled maintenance department built up a lot of internal skill in how we maintain our buildings, and then there is this continual evaluation because we're still spending some of those dollars. So, there's that constant evaluation and part of a facilities plan. So I don't know where the district was before that, but my guess is it was gearing up for a very big bond, and I think now we have a very good system of monitoring maintenance and projecting for enrollment growth, even though there's still some surprises. So I think the system is better. It is more transparent, especially in that bond work, there was that really clear communication strategy about what the bond paid for. So now, next summer, we will have another three schools that get work, work done. So I think because it's been fairly easy for me to get up to speed on that in a very large organization, I think the system is better than it probably was before the last bond. Mike?
Yes, absolutely. And as Christie said, as we're implementing over a quarter of a billion dollars' worth of capital investments, we're learning how to do that better. We're also learning the skill sets that we need to have in place to maintain and preserve the investments. And this system that we're talking about, the automated system, really allows us to move into more of a preventative maintenance role, which I think may have helped contribute to a big backlog of deferred maintenance in the past. And I'd also say the integration between construction services and maintenance, which has been a reorganization internally, has really helped to move that work forward as well.
So will we be, will we be able to ask the question during the budget process? What percentage of our maintenance are we going to be able to do with the amount we've allocated this year so we have some sense of what we're putting off every year?
You can ask whatever question comes to mind during the budget process.
Will you be able to answer that?
And we will, we will certainly look into it if it gets asked, for sure, yeah.
That's, that's a precursor to that question, Mike, that question will be asked.
It will be.
Any more questions on this executive limitation? I'm looking for consensus. This is used as part of the superintendent's position evaluation. All right, we have a good thumbs up there. We have good consensus on this. All right, then, second report has to do with the strategic plan, and our Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Human Resources is going to cover the strategic plan item tonight, Ken Partial.
Good evening, Chair Kimball, Superintendent Perry, and Directors. It's my pleasure to introduce our presenters tonight, who will address strategic plan component number three, which is to continue to provide professional development that offers quality and focused opportunities, has long-term sustainability, and provides implementation strategies for all staff, including instructional coaching and mentoring. And our lead presenter is Rachel Harms, our professional development, excuse me, our professional development office coordinator. And you'll meet two of our teachers, Greg and Rachel. Greg serves as a mentor to beginning teachers, and Rachel serves as an instructional coach. So you'll meet two of these people who play important roles in these career pathway opportunities for teachers. Rachel Harms.
Good evening. As Bill and Melinda Gates said in 2009, dramatic improvements in student achievement can't occur without a sustained and strategic focus on maximizing teacher effectiveness. Increasing the effectiveness of professional learning is the leverage point with the greatest potential for strengthening and refining the day-to-day performance of our educators. Teachers want and need support to develop their practice so that their students can succeed. So tonight, we're going to take a closer look at five areas of professional development. We're going to look at our Academy for Teaching and Learning, which, and how it links with our evaluation system. We're going to look at ongoing professional development throughout the year. We're going to look in at our instructional coaches, our mentors, and finally with our teacher improvement mentor. We'll begin by looking at how teachers can select classes in the academy that are linked to our Legends standards. And this is just a screenshot of what teachers see when they log into the Academy for Teaching and Learning and try to search by standard. Teachers know what they need and what they want to be able to select from a broad range of opportunities. So staff may select classes in a variety of ways, including by Intask Standard or ISLIC Standard. This also includes all of our specialized rubrics that have been created. This allows teachers to choose their classes based on their self-evaluation or their initial conference with their building supervisor. Employees keep a completely electronic transcript for license renewal on the Academy for Teaching and Learning. PDUs are recorded here, streamlining the process for renewal. This year, so far since September, we've recorded just over 250,000 professional development hours as a district.
Wow.
Okay, next you'll see some samples. If we do a search by standard, and these five standards were the ones that were, that had the most requests for support last year. These are just examples. For example, if I go in and search under standard three, classroom environment, I would see that I have opportunities to take classes such as Envoy, which is a classroom management class, or a healthy classroom, and these are just samples, it's not comprehensive. We also have specific days that are set aside for self-selected professional development, such as our upcoming June Summit and our statewide in-service day on October 9. Right now, we're looking at right about 44 workshops that we've put together for October in-service day. These include some names that I'm very excited about, like Michael Grinder and Marcia Tate. But in order to make sure new learning translates into classroom practice, we're not just going to classes, we're actually coming back and putting them into practice, we have some wonderful instructional coaches, e-lases, mentors that work alongside of our teachers. Instructional coaches, mentors, and program assistants provide a lot of the professional development we offer, so it's important that we give them the right learning opportunities, too. What you see on this slide are the opportunities for support that we provide to our instructional coaches. They have every fall to bring our new coaches up to speed and to refresh our existing coaches who wish to participate. We have a three-day boot camp. It gives them a fresh start to the year with a clear action plan and a trajectory for their work throughout the year. We also offer Coaching Forum, which is one or two half-days per month, depending, it's usually two. This brings a level of professional support to actively work on coaching practice. It provides a space where coaches can engage with one another and get multiple perspectives at the table. We also have Coaching Academy, which is an optional differentiated opportunity for coaches. They get to choose what's covered in Coaching Academy, and it is K-12, so any coach can participate, and it's just differentiated professional development. So an example, coaches this year said, "We really need to understand how Google Docs supports the work of classroom teachers so that we can assist them better." So we brought in some of our experts that know how to do that work, and they spent sessions going through all the different components of Google Docs and how it can be used in data teams. But the results of this are that we're seeing that it positively impacts the work that teachers are doing in their classrooms, and that results in more student learning. But what do we do for our brand-new teachers? So our brand-new teachers are given extensive supports. All new teachers to the profession are provided with intensive training in foundational teaching skills, such as lesson planning, classroom management, student engagement, and content knowledge. This training is followed up with one-on-one mentoring provided by our full-release mentors. The work our mentors do help our beginning teachers become more effective in their work, and we know what makes an effective teacher. Effective teachers are the ones who know their students. They know who their students are, they know their students' learning styles, their strengths, their challenges as learners. These teachers are masters of their subject matter, but most importantly, effective teachers are always focused on their students' learning. We want to create opportunities for teachers to be effective from day one, so we provide these supports for beginning teachers. This slide shows you just some of the things that beginning teachers receive. All first, second, and third-year teachers are mentored if they're new to the profession. This year, our mentors mentored 331 new teachers. Each of the first and second-year teachers receive a minimum of 90 hours of support per teacher, and they get a variety of different types of feedback. They use observational data, summative data, self-reporting data, and one that's fairly new is video observation data. And what our mentors have discovered is that of all the types of feedback they use, the use of video has given the biggest boost to our beginning teachers. As Jim Knight said in his book in 2015, "Video changes everything. Used effectively in a way that honors teachers' professionalism and learning, video can be the most powerful improvement we have experienced in our schools in a long time." What else does current research tell us? Video has enormous potential for improving teaching and learning. Video helps us see exactly what it looks like when we teach and when our students learn. Video compels us to confront the reality of our professional practice and seek positive change. And we know that other professions have used video for a really long time. This may look familiar. Oregon Ducks are on that slide, just in case you're wondering. Just as athletic coaches review game film, teachers can benefit from video analysis of professional practice. Reflective conversations about professional practice require that teachers understand and analyze the events that are unfolding in their classroom. In these conversations, teachers consider the instructional decisions they have made and examine student learning in light of these decisions. And so you're probably wondering why I'm telling you about video. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Edivate Review, which is something new to us this year, and then I'm going to have Greg Watson, one of our mentors, tell you about how he's using this with his mentors. So this slide is just simply a screenshot of what you can see if you log into Edivate Review. Edivate Review allows teachers to take video in their classroom and then upload it to a secure platform and share it with their mentor or coach or anyone else that they choose. Then a professional conversation can take place between these teachers or this group. It can be tagged, and that's what those little colorful pieces right here are, those are just tags that we can look for patterns and trends. It can involve written, audio, or video feedback in response to the video, and it's very powerful. So I'm going to invite Greg Watson, one of our 17 full-release mentors, to come and tell you more about what he does with this.
Thank you. Move that up. Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Chair President Kimball, and members of the board. Thank you for letting me come in and share a little bit about the, I think, exciting work that I get to do as a full-release mentor and some of the things that our mentor team has been doing with this Edivate Review to help move our beginning teachers' practice forward. One of the things that we are using is to enhance what we've already been doing as mentors. We've been using video with our mentees for the last six years of the mentor program, but this platform gives us a more professional and secure way to collaborate around the videos that we're fighting for our teachers. It allows us to go in and embed our feedback and to ask some reflective questions within the video, so when teachers are watching, they see it paired right next to what's happening in the classroom. And our teachers have said that's more powerful for them than just getting a written feedback and trying to remember themselves what was happening during their lesson at that point. It also gives our teachers a voice in this process, whereas before, I'd just be leaving them written feedback, and then they would have to kind of look at it, then we'd get back together and talk. Now they can watch the video, and they can actually comment themselves. They can respond right within the conversation to questions that I've posed. They can also fill in the blanks, because I know a lot of times we miss things coming in and out of their classrooms that we didn't see happening. So it's a more collaborative process, and this whole thing can then be printed out, and they can then share that, if they wish, with their administrator, which supports their work on Legends 9.2, using multiple sources of evidence to self-assess their professional practice. Another way that we've been using it this year is with providing a learning lab experience. We know that taking teachers out and seeing a veteran teacher is very powerful to see what that looks like in another setting. Unfortunately, with subs and budgets, that hasn't been as possible, so this has allowed us to be more creative and actually bring a learning lab experience to them, like a virtual learning lab. We had noticed this year that some of our teachers were really struggling with Reading Standard 2.1 around main idea and supporting details. So we were able to go into PD 360, find existing videos of teachers teaching that standard, put them into Edivate Review. Our teachers can watch them, they are able to reflect and see what were they noticing the teachers doing in those videos, then implement it in their classrooms, and then upload what they had used back into that group. So we now have 16 resources that are uploaded in this group that all those teachers have access to around that one specific standard. We've also used it, using our own teachers in Salem Kaiser, creating a virtual lab. Our PE teachers often are more isolated, especially in the elementary world, and they get together with two of our PE teachers who help support them, and they said, "It's really hard to imagine, what does engagement look like for first graders in a gym?" It's pretty easy to talk about, but they need to see it. So our PE teachers put together some video segments showing, "How do you start a class? How do you get their attention? How do you manage, how do you keep them engaged?" And now all of our beginning PE teachers can go and see those segments in real life with kids in Salem Kaiser. And we were able to do this without having to pull our teachers out of the classroom. Their students didn't have to have a sub that day, and we weren't impacting the sub pool. As we keep working more and more with this Edivate Review, we're excited about the potential of using it with our PLCs and data teams. I had the unique opportunity of having two beginning teachers on one PLC this year, and they were planning a literacy lesson, and we're both going to be teaching the same lesson that they planned on the same day. And they let me come in and videotape each of them teaching that lesson, and then they shared their videos with one another through Edivate Review, and were able to watch their colleagues and do a peer observation. And afterwards, in talking with the two of them, they said it was one of the best experiences they had to see how somebody else implemented what they had just spent time talking, because we each have individual styles when representing, and both walked away with three concrete things that they were going to then implement. things that they were going to then implement in their own practice, and they both said they would love to do it with a bigger audience in their school to see how other teachers right next door to them are using those strategies they talk about. And finally, we've been using it for our own professional development as mentors. While there's 17 of us, a lot of times we're spread out across the district, and we don't have a lot of time to get together and work on mentoring ourselves. This is providing a way for us to record our own sessions, we can upload them into Edivate Review, and as peer coaches, we can watch each other in our mentoring and give each other feedback on the mentoring language that we're using. What kind of entry points can we find to move your teachers' practice forward, and we're able to coach each other through our own mentoring? And we have a group of mentors right now who are working with earning a micro-credential in the era of paraphrasing through the New Teacher Center, and all that's going to be done through this platform so that we can upload videos of ourselves using paraphrasing and evaluate, and help each other evaluate the effectiveness of it with one another. We're excited about the feedback that we've gotten from our teachers. They've enjoyed the platform, they like the collaboration involved with the video, and as mentors, we've really enjoyed and feel like that we are learning and growing, and we're excited about how we can continue using this to help move our teachers' practice
So we know that the alignment of school and district practice in hiring, mentoring, professional development, and performance evaluation forms a continuum of professional practice, and this is closely tied to an articulated understanding of effective teaching. This provides the critical pathway to having an effective teacher in every classroom. In support of this work, I'd like to introduce our teacher improvement mentor, Rachel Babs, who's going to tell you about her work.
My name is Rachel, as Rachel said, from Staff Quality and Human Resources, and I get to ask the question a lot, "Who are you and what do you do?" And I was just informed I have my own budget line. I was hoping for notoriety, that wasn't quite what I was looking for. In my role as the teacher improvement mentor, I provide peer support for certified staff seeking to make growth in their instructional practice. This is a collaborative relationship in cooperation with the Salem Kaiser Education Association. The work I do with teachers is a voluntary partnership, where the teacher sets goals and the mentor acts as a mirror reflecting back to the teacher, non-evaluative, specific, descriptive feedback. The work we do together is a continuum of professional growth to improve instructional practice. The teachers are the drivers in this relationship, and the teacher improvement mentor is a guide on the side, providing differentiated support based on the expressed needs of the teacher. The work I do with teachers is a voluntary partnership, where the teacher sets the goals, and as the mentor, I act as the mirror reflecting to the teacher. One of the professional development opportunities provided to the teachers, working with the teacher improvement mentor, is the district-sponsored, association-supported, professional development training, reinduction. The new teachers go to reinduction, veteran teachers attend reinduction. This optional four-day training, which takes place the first week of August, offers a focused learning experience designed to deeper understanding of effective instructional strategies. In the planning phase of reinduction, we frame our focus through the lens of the continuum of professional practice, which is developing awareness, building knowledge, transferring, translating into practice, reflecting and building capacity. This year, the two key points of focus for the reinduction symposium are classroom management and student engagement. Why classroom management? Educational researchers, such as John Hattie and Robert Marzano, have found one of the top variables on student achievement to be classroom management. Since classroom management is such a key factor in successful teaching, we spend at least one full day of reinduction, talking about how to put classroom manages, classroom management systems in place, and create a predictable, safe, learning environment. Theodore Roosevelt once famously said, "People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." Educators know that more than anyone. We often find that once the teacher is systematic and visual in regards to classroom management and routines, relationships can be established and maintained, and more time can be spent on instruction. Just as important as classroom management is student engagement. Robert Marzano, in his book, The Highly Engaged Classroom, tasks teachers with being aware of four emblematic questions. How do I feel? Am I interested? Is this important? And can I do this? If the student can answer yes, Marzano claims, to those four emblematic questions, the students will be more engaged in the learning process. According to Jerry Valentine and Justin Collins, two researchers who have studied the effects of motivation in the classroom, the correlation between student engagement and achievement is consistently strong and significant. Research shows that for every 2% disengagement rises, pass rates on high-stake tests drop by 1%. Because of the impact on student engagement, because of the impact student engagement has on achievement, we will spend two full days of reinduction, learning how to effectively engage students. In particular, we will focus on 20 strategies to engage the brain. The strategies are based on brain research and synthesized by Dr. Marcia Tate, one of the country's leading experts on student engagement. Reinduction participants will experience two of Dr. Tate's trainings, sit-and-get-won't-grow-dendrites, and assessment, how do we know they are learning? In summary, in order to meet the needs of every child, every day, the purpose of the teacher improvement mentor is to support teachers in a collaborative relationship, working side-by-side to create a predictable, safe, and productive learning environment, where students are engaged in curriculum and achieve academic success. Thank you.
And if I could just, first of all, I'd like to thank Rachel and Greg, two fine examples of teacher leaders in our districts, in our district. We've worked hard to create career pathways for teachers, so that the only route to leadership is not to become an administrator, but to become a mentor, a program assistant, an instructional coach. And Salem Kaiser is on the cutting edge in professional development in our state. One of the pieces that showed that very clearly was last year's TELS survey, which was a statewide survey completed by our own teachers that helped hold up professional development as a pride point for Salem Kaiser. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Anybody have any comments or questions? Jim?
So I'm sure we're doing it, but I just want to make sure, and it can be an offline discussion, or someone can provide me the information, but as I listened and I read through the materials earlier, you know, one of the things that I think we need to focus on, in particular in our school district, is meeting students where they are, and I hope we have some sort of training for our new teachers or in the reinduction, so that we can make sure they're culturally competent as they work with our student populations. Because if you look at our population of students, we're flipping. I mean, we are soon to be a minority-majority school district, and I know we strive to hire as best we can, that our teachers look like our students, but do we have those type of trainings for our staff, so that they know how to interact with those different cultures they're going to come in contact with, with the kids?
Yes, and at some of our school and staff requests this year, we had a very unique training that I'll have Rachel tell you about, about, around poverty.
Oh, yeah. We have, we've had well over 1,000 different trainings this year, so that's why I gave them a look. Which one? Yeah, we did, actually, in the fall this year, we had for October In-Service Day, we held four sessions of a poverty awareness workshop, and that was one of the things that was addressed, was how do we interact effectively with students who are living in poverty? And teachers were able to actually go through a simulation and experience firsthand, you know, very short simulation of what it was like, and it was very eye-opening. And then they went back to schools, had book studies as a follow-up, and then ongoing conversation about how they would respond to that, both individually and as a staff.
And Jim, I think on that note, what was impressive is our staff were, they were asking for that. They were saying, "Hey, we really want to learn more about this," and I think that says a lot about the hearts and minds of the people we're putting in front of kids.
And our population of students. We have almost 60%
Absolutely.
... poverty students in our district, so.
Yes.
Chris?
I just want to start out by saying, we're so quiet up here, and when you guys talk, when you were, both went to sit down, I wanted to clap for you. And I just want you to know that that's the way I was feeling, even though we don't do that typically. This is more to put something on your radar. As some of you know, I'm Commissioner within the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission, as well as actually representing school boards. And one of the things that TSBC is working on right now is the new licensure system, and we just decided at our meeting last week that staff development will be a component that will allow people to move from their initial license to their standard license. Yeah, I knew you'd probably clap for that. And, but the real crux of that is that there is a, we have to decide what type of staff development qualifies and what type of staff development doesn't qualify, so there's going to have to be some standards that say, in order for somebody to use a PDU for moving from one license to the next, they have to do a certain kind of staff development. I'm putting that on your radar, because I think you can be very informative to that process for TSBC, along how might we build standards in that says, "This is, this qualifies, this doesn't." And I hope you can help us with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Chuck?
Just a comment, as I was, I felt like clapping, too, at the end of each one of those. It was very good, and as I was sitting here, I was just remembering how much out-of-classroom work it takes to be an effective teacher and what a draining profession teaching is. And, you know, I think it's really appropriate that this, this month at our meeting, we acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week, and as I listen to you, Rachel, and your two colleagues, it's incredible to me, the amount of work that goes into the science of teaching. So I think I speak for all of us on the, on the board, that we really do appreciate all of this professional growth and just the work that's done in the classroom every day.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Nancy?
I just want to echo what they said about what a great presentation and great work. I do have a question. Edivate, is it a word?
It's a noun, it's a verb. Edivate is actually the new name for PD360's platform. It's the same system we've had in place for several years, but they changed the name. We're not sure why.
And they just made it up?
They made it up, yes.
Okay. I kept listening, like, what is that word they're using?
Educate and motivate.
Oh, educate, edivate, oh.
Got to be what it is.
Thank you for straightening us out, Chris, on that one. Any other questions or comments tonight?
No.
Thank you, Ken, Rachel, and Greg, and Rachel for the report. Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for readings tonight, next, or reports. Next on our agenda is information items, and we have a list of our upcoming meetings. I want to make sure I point out to the board and the audience that our next meeting is April 28th, and it's the budget message. Superintendent will deliver the budget message on April 28th at 6:00 PM in this boardroom, I believe. Correct? Yeah. So that'll be our next meeting, and the full-budget committee should be there. Then we'll move on to audience communications on non-agenda items. We have one person signed up to speak to the board, Dave Harvey. If you could come forward and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Dave Harvey, 2807 Islander Avenue, Northwest, and here in Salem. Chairperson Kimball, School Board Directors, Superintendent Perry. I'm here tonight on behalf of SEDEXO, the company I work for. We provide many non-monetary support to various schools and programs within the district in the form of food, non-food, technical assistance, and so on. For a good example, the culinary programs that you have here, we provide cutting boards and wizard gloves, knives. We have a chef in the district that goes out and helps them occasionally with, with some of the trainings that they need to have for technical expertise, and also just helping with some of the South and all the other ones that are here. Tonight, I'm here, though, to provide students with scholarship money in the form of a $7,000 check made out to the district. We firmly believe in the continuing of higher education, and as your partner, this is one of the many ways we support the students of the community. This is something that we do on a yearly basis. I just want to be able to provide that here to you tonight, so, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Anybody else want to talk to us?
Anybody else want to give us checks?
Okay, that's the only person who signed up to give us a check. Anybody who didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to speak on non-agenda items. Okay, see you in no one, we'll move on. And thank you very much, SEDEXO, for that donation, we appreciate it greatly. Board reports on activities. Anybody have, Nancy, you go first.
So a number of us attended the superintendent's address, a jointly sponsored event with the Chamber, City Club, and Rotary?
Rotary.
Rotary. And I have to really acknowledge Kristy Perry and Julie
How do you say that?
Huckstein, from Shemeketa, for making the choice to present together. I think that really makes a definitive statement about the district and the college working together. I think it's a really positive move for our students. So, thanks, it was a really great job. Second of all, I have to say, I went to the state basketball championship for the girls, and I'm dressed in my state championship shirt. This was really special for me to go to. Title IX passed my senior year in high school. I had no opportunity to participate in sports at all. And going to that event, seeing those girls play amazing basketball, see the student section supporting them, see the pep band there for, I went to the semifinal game and the final game. The final game was really, South was up by quite a bit, and it, very close to the end, the lead narrowed to two points, and the other team was very stressed and playing in a stressed manner, and the South girls were just calm and professional. It was just really, really fun. And for someone who had no opportunity to participate in sports, it was just really wonderful to see the girls who have had the ability and the opportunity to develop their passion and really excel in athletics. So, sorry, it was a little bit of a soapbox, but really meaningful to me.
Thank you, Nancy. Paul?
I just wanted to say that I thought that the Salem Kaiser Job Fair that was put on by the Human Resource Department was great. It was a well-run event, and it was nice to be there to meet with the administrators and the new staff. And it was just a fun time, and those of you who missed it, you missed a good time. And I still want one of the shirts.
You'll wear it to one of our meetings if you give one. Anybody else? Jim?
I just have a couple of things. One, the district does this, and I'm not sure a lot of people are aware of it. They didn't do it when I was a student, so it's a great opportunity. If you haven't had the opportunity, go to your local high school curriculum night, when the eighth graders are going to be freshmen next year. My son's going to be a freshman next year at Sprague, and we went to the high school curriculum night, and it's a, at Sprague High School, Curtis and his staff did an excellent job. But it's amazing to watch these eighth graders who walk into a high school, and they're all wide-eyed, and they're like, "Oh, my God, I'm actually going to go to high school next year." But the staff did a great job talking to them about their schedule, what to expect in high school. They had an AP area in the library, they had all the CTE programs out. It's a great opportunity for those eighth graders to see what high school is, and lots of high school students there, talking them through some of the things, and I think it's a great opportunity. I wish I would have had a night like that when I was an eighth grader coming into high school. The other one, and I say it every year, I got to attend again the honor choir area out in Sprague, because they get the elementary schools, the middle schools together, and I think it's one of the reasons we have such a fantastic music program in our city, is they really start at the high school level, but go all the way down into the elementary level. And it's interesting to see elementary kids, the fourth and fifth graders, sing with the juniors and seniors who are in the, the competition choirs. It's a really unique thing that, out at Sprague, you had five-feater elementaries, the two middle schools, and the high school kids all singing together. It was just a great night, and that just shows, the music program we have here is really first-rate, when you compare it across the state, and I think across the nation, too.
Thanks, Jim. Chris?
I have to just tell the story. I wasn't able to go to the game. I am jealous of you being there. I was actually at the home of some of your neighbors who were both alumni of the South High staff, both of whom worked there for twenty-five, thirty years. Our dinner was interrupted frequently by the feed coming off the computer of what was going on, and we were trying to track that thing on a computer. There was cheering at, at their home as well. So it was sort of a funny evening.
See, in the streets.
I just want to remind everybody that the Awesome 3000 is coming up, the May 2nd, and that we're right in the heart of asking people to come and volunteer. We need over seven hundred volunteers that day. And skeducation.org, education, skeducationfoundation.org, and you can volunteer to, to help out there. I need people at the finish line.
Thanks, Chris. All right, I think that's it for board reports tonight, and last, we'll have some comments from Superintendent Perry.
All right. Well, I checked off a few of mine as you were going, but on hiring, I know we've talked a lot about teacher shortage for next year, and with the Salem Kaiser Job Fair and the Portland Job Fair, we've hired one hundred and eleven licensed staff to date. I think Ruth gets the award for hiring on the spot, and I think we've got twenty, how many special ed teachers have?
Seventeen between the two of you out there.
Seventeen special ed teachers between the two.
I have to stay a bit for listen, then the whole four of you, the whole board, we've hired the entire cohort.
And we are ahead of the game on hiring, ahead of other districts, so we're, the Human Resources Department also is doing a great job on that. I also got to attend last Friday the African-American Youth Leaders Conference, put on by the NAACP, and I want to be sure that I thank Kathleen Hanneman and Cynthia Richardson, who actually did a workshop on if you're interested in becoming a teacher. So we had, and I know there were some out-of-town students there, but about two hundred students there doing programs and seminars for a good portion of a day, and the NAACP did a great job with that event, especially Marilyn Williams was the organizer of it. I also want to recognize Western. I am a Western Oregon University graduate. In spite of what Kelly Norris said about me at the lunch, I did graduate from Western Oregon University. Have I covered it now, Paul?
You've covered.
But more importantly, Western and Salem Kaiser School District has been working on a joint partnership around recruiting bilingual teachers. Western awarded twenty-six students in our district, who are seniors in high school, full financial packages to attend Western next year to be bilingual teachers. So twenty-six, there were students across all high schools, and so four years from now, twenty-six of those
Hopefully, we'll come back.
... could come back and be bilingual teachers. We also, Western and Salem Kaiser did a college fair at Shemecada, looking at those two, those two-year students who have been at Shemecada and transferring in. And I bet we had about seventy-five kids there looking at coming to Western, and the bilingual instructor from Western said she was incredibly impressed with the students and their ability to really speak well in both English and Spanish. So we see that as another great crop of educators. And then finally, we've been busy, busy hiring new cabinet directors. So on your agenda tonight was Larry Ramirez. He will be our Director of High Schools. He is coming from Nissah, Oregon. He learned tonight that you can watch the board meetings by, on television. So he now has learned about CCTV, even though he's not in the big city yet. And Larry has led a very diverse high school at Nissah. He also has played a strong part in Oregon Athletic Association, so OSAA, and is going to be a great member of our team. Lisa Harland is our new elementary director. She comes from Oregon Department of Education. She will, leads the work of our priority and focus schools across the state. So she'll be joining Sandy Price as an elementary director. And then yesterday, we announced Matt Beyondi, who is the principal at Stevens Middle School as our middle-level director. So that rounds out our level office at this point in time, and just some incredibly great hires and a really, really strong process that Kelly Carlisle put together to help us with those selections. So hard choices, we had great candidates. And I think that's the end of my list for tonight.
Thank you, Kristy. I'll remind everybody, on the 28th, two, two weeks from tonight will be the superintendent's budget message here in this room. This meeting is adjourned.